Okay, motion for me to move the April 5th 2016 minutes. All of the papers say aye. Anybody opposed?
You, that's why I mentioned Jerry.
Yeah, I consulted with our board for Lorraine. Scott was up tonight, but he won't be here. The next person on the list is Robert Ritter.
Or the last one, yes, this is the first.
And sure, you want to get the paper noticed.
Sure.
Alright, so the first thing right now is that we approve the minutes. And it was moved by Alson. Alright, who has somebody here? Ford up bills.
I do. So on April 19th, Lorraine and Steve read the bills from Food Services. It'll be amount of $53,731.66. And to the general fund in the amount of $721,645.52. And then on May 3rd, Lorraine I read bills from the general fund in the amount of $842,860.21. And I agree with that.
Second? Thank you. All those in favor of getting the director's orders as read by JP, please say aye. Anybody opposed?
Before we move on, can I add about what this is? We need two signatures to approve the bills. And it looks like there's a conflict either DP or I will be able to do around the 17th. Is there anyone? Lorraine will still review the bills, but is there anyone who would be able to either stop by Tuesday afternoon? This could be anyone on the board to provide a second signature. Lorraine will review the bills and follow the knowledge procedures. We need a second signature.
I'll do that. You'll do that, okay. Thank you very much. Alright, onto our various reports. And some of the nice long results of course from the principals, thank you very much. Any questions?
You mean exhausting?
No. I think it is worth pointing out both in the bill's report and in the absolute penalty. Pretty amazing information on Nick. We'll have to congratulate him at our next meeting. That is really quite remarkable. Any other questions or comments? Alright, well, we can take a few minutes if folks have particular questions about the international faculty program, the middle years program, and the diploma program. We've got our principals here to talk a little bit more about it. Anyone have further questions?
Well, I had kind of a question, and I'm not exactly sure what the best way to frame it is, but I wondered if kind of when you're learning about it, you'd heard about it, about experiences of schools or districts that were trying to adopt either of the programs that you're talking about, that had build resistance from teachers who, you know, felt like, teachers felt like, oh my gosh, you're asking me to do this really different thing? And whether you, you know, see schools deal with that and how? And whether you have reservations about that?
Over the April vacation, I went to Cape and one of my former teachers, Ashley Yates, is now the IB coordinator for the Wareham Public Schools in Massachusetts. And that's a district that has a very high poverty rate. There are all sorts of funding issues and the faculty is highly stressed. And there is no resistance just because they feel pretty overwhelmed by everything. I think that the new administration coming in sort of sees it as perhaps an opportunity to change things. But so there are schools out there that do this struggle. And I think that we're just fortunate to be in a very different place than that.
Just to add to that, having come from a very different reality in Oregon where class sizes are 45 or uncommon in high school, the level, the capacity level as a teacher, it's really hard to move through things like this because people feel really stressed just about all the work that they have to do. So I think we have a much better infrastructure so that teachers have the ability to actually reflect and think about and see how this fits as opposed to potential in some districts like that one where there's no space for reflection of what else. I just need to get all this work done and get it back to students and then I need to do this and that. It's very, like I was mentioning earlier, very reactive. But we're lucky enough.
I think we've also saw in some districts when we went to Boston, some of the schools talked about, if teachers, if it wasn't for them, they knew it and they, I don't know, decided to move on.
And I think there's a, there may be a real difference between the DP and NYPD in regard to this. Just because there's a lot more flexibility with NYPD than DP. So when, in talking with teachers at the middle school of the cannibals, it feels like they began exactly where most of us began. Lots of flags and questions about what we thought we knew about what IB was because we've heard the term and it was associated with something. And our reality has shifted, our understanding about IB and what it really is and what it looks like and what it takes to be an IB school is very different. And in talking with them, they were in the same place and as they progressed, they realized, this really is achievable. And there are a lot of structures in place now. So I've even seen, so from my own perspective, this has happened. And I've seen it happen with a number of teachers in the middle school. Lots of people began with a barrier, like, I really don't think this is going to work out, but I'll go through the process. As they're progressing through the process, so now they've been on a site visit, they've gone to sort of a mini conference in Boston, a more extensive conference in Florida, they've done more reading, we've had lots of conversations. Every middle school teacher on the NYPD work group is really excited and enthusiastic and feels like we could really do this and it can be a great thing. So it's been interesting to see that evolution from no way to I can't wait.
The barriers is a smart way to talk about it. I think originally, the first barrier we see teachers having is that it's an elite program. It's not going to work for all of our students. When they get past that, the next one is they're going to tell us what to teach. When they realize that our curriculum can stay intact and that it's really a new way of thinking about teaching and learning, they sort of get past that. I think the one that you can't get past is if you're a traditional teacher who wants a stand and deliver approach. You know, if that's the way you want to teach, then it would be very difficult, I think, to make that fit into this program. It's got to be student centered, it's got to be inquiry based. And, you know, that change, that fundamental change has to happen in order for this program to take root. I think the good news from our perspective is that many of our teachers are already in that place. So when they get to that spot, they're going to realize this fits so beautifully with what I'm already doing in classroom.
Yes. I was impressed by the level of enthusiasm and conviction of the group. But I found the clips, the clips seemed to be from kids who were not in the same milieu, socioeconomic background as the Axiou kids. I thought the clips, the clips didn't really sort of fit.
We looked, yeah, we looked at a lot of different videos and tried to get some students talking about their experience. Those aren't, I don't think those are all prep school kids from different schools. If you look at the different schools they came from, but some of them are international. So it's hard to know.
It was a strong international.
My hope is, yeah, my hope is that if we do go forward, we have a great one here. Rectify that.
I should say, we talked to a school from Athens, Georgia, that I would say probably socioeconomically is, has greater need than our, if we look at our group as a supervisory union. Yeah, so it certainly exists in that kind of environment.
When we went to our training in Florida, the group that runs it is actually called FLIBs, which is the Florida IB Schools Group. And it's so prevalent down there because schools in Florida see it as a mechanism to bridge the achievement gap. And that's why it's popping up in public schools. And we were there with a number of administrators and coordinators who were just trying to get the program off the ground or in the same inquiry stage that we were. So that's a portion of our country where, like I said, they're seeing it as a tool to bridge achievement.
And Robin Califrey, who ran a workshop that I attended last summer, was principal of a student, 1500 or so student high school along Island. And had higher poverty rate, and we did have a much higher ratio profile than we do. And that was in all IBs, all the courses.
All the way through.
Roughly the same percentage of special education students as we do. Took that school while the school was in the building. And I do get that from, so it's taken us a time to get there.
Steve?
So foundationally, you're talking about the driving principles. I get the, because this is like, this has got foundational in it for a long time. The, this is what we want them to know, this is what we want them to understand, this is what we want them to do. And I got the, this is how we want them to have. The one that you can perhaps explain to me a little better is, this is how we want them to feel. How do my kids tell they want to feel?
I'm not so certain. I don't know about the feel. I mean, it's not how do students know what they know? And that's one of the things in the program stresses is that sort of understanding of your knowledge. We want to take the part. So we have the mentor level plan for years. It's talking about self-regulation, work habits, things like that. And then as you progress in age, fundamentally, you're questioning, which adolescent student, clearly naturally, they can question about how you know that. This student has perspectives and that their perspective may be different from my perspective. But both perspectives have a sort of ability to engage students and appreciate them. I think that's sort of the way I would look at it as opposed to the feeling.
And for me, it's having to explain power about learning. That's pretty powerful.
So it's a more specific, like, directing way is about, maybe how to tap into feeling about learning?
Exactly. It's getting them engaged because they're starting from their current state of knowledge. And then exploring how they explore and get into new knowledge. And what's driving them is their innate curiosity.
And the reflection that they do, I mean, that's all about learning?
As opposed to all this dumbing stuff.
Okay, thank you.
So my question is, there always has to be a certain amount of dumbing in this. After all, learning does require a transfer of knowledge from the adult to the student. How does, you know, and this is all about inquiry based learning and, you know, all that. So how does the teaching style differ? How do you, how do you give them a chapter of calculus for inquiry based learning?
Because to use that example, then they're going to give them sometimes a problem and they're going to sort of put that problem out there and let students go out without telling them how to solve it. And letting them fool around with it and play with it until they develop. And they're going to put that through a process that's going to keep helping them get closer to that. I think Scott talked about this sort of evolution of a particular project that we're doing. It's that involvement.
I think that idea of the shift from the teacher as the conveyor of knowledge to the teacher as the facilitator of learning, that sort of encapsulates the shift.
It was still, the teacher was holding the knowledge that needs to be transferred to the students. So that's why I get a little skeptical. Go ahead, Steve.
Actually, not really here. Because I used to be a standard little kind of teacher and with the personal finance stuff, that knowledge is out in the world. I don't hold it. And it's kind of like, well, that's interesting, did you think about this? And you're kind of leading them towards it rather than doing it to them. And when they discover it, when they discover it, they have much more ownership of it. Like when I teach personal finance, I can tell them, student loans will do this to you. And they'll go, yeah, yeah, okay. But then when they see it, when they see what it's actually going to do, because they've selected the school and they've selected all these, they've made all these choices. Then they go, oh, now I get it. Because I see how that would apply to me individually. So it's not that I have the knowledge. It's, because that's, I think it's a mistaken model of teachers as repositories of knowledge. We just really channel that knowledge to the kids. And they need to find that in the world and how to access it.
Sort of biology textbooks when I was, you know, in high school, you're that kid. Now, now they're like that, so you don't have to take. I don't example, so I have a gray llama with brown spots. That's father was an all black animal and the mother was brown. How did this thing come up? It's gray with brown spots. And there's the problem. Now you delve into it and you get very deeply into a lot of biology that was there when I was in biology. So that's how we get it. And that information, the phone, that's the reason, actually, the importance of the information on certain things, that knowledge.
Sort of creating a scenario where they have to be able to ask questions to solve the problem. Helping them ask those questions, you know what questions to ask. And then helping them think about, how can you find the answer to these questions that you're raising throughout the process?
And I was thinking more of the whole engine of subjects where, you know, it's very specific knowledge that you need. The next chapter of Spanish, you can't get it through inquiry based learning. You actually need to just learn it.
You can, you can. If Middlebury College, you call this the move from the sage on the stage to the guide on the side. Because you're actually right. In that little smartphone, all that information is out there. You're essentially, you have to get repositories of that knowledge. It really loops it around. I'm talking to the same high students, you know, well, how do you figure that out for yourself? And I'm not going to answer questions that they can figure out for themselves. I want to teach them to figure it out for themselves.
And it's actually much more challenging for a teacher. It's easy just to say, here, this is the knowledge, memorize it, and I hope you can know when to apply it. Much more challenging for, create the circumstance under which they have, they can discover it on their own through that sort of guide of learning.
And you know, Catholicism is a good example. There's just so, there's such great stuff out there. UConn Academy, they get stuck on a big, they're sometimes on their own. They can go to all these resources and they can go to the teacher. And students will really listen if they try to figure it out on their own and they're totally lost. And they're like, taking notes. So it's very effective from, you all know this, but it's very effective for ACH.
It's ACH. They did it twice.
Does the, it's kind of the two-fold question. With the IB diploma that they get from going through the, yeah, I don't remember the acorns. Does that replace them needing SATs? If they get that diploma, will college? Because I'm sure the SATs allow you to have your smartphone. There's certain things that they have to have memorized. But that's why I'm wondering, will this knowledge then, and this type of inquiry, allow them to bypass SATs? Are they still going to be tied to that silly test where you've got to remember, because you don't have your smartphone?
It's a complex question because the length of schools now when they're acquiring the SAT.
That's what I'm wondering.
The IB is highly recognized. I mean, I think we've, some of the folks in my group, not the folks at Middlebury College, who say they can tell in their classrooms when they have a group of students who are IB students versus non-IB students. That there's a remarkable noticeable difference.
No, but I have entrance. It's nice once they're there, but it's a hidden one there.
So that's generally, now, to get that, to get that IB diploma, you have to come up, reach a certain number, it's 23 or 24, from all of the subject area tests that you take. But those, which is in some ways similar to what happens in NYPD. But the tests are very different types of tests.
So technically, as of right now, they still have to do that SAT to get into quite a few colleges?
Well, it depends. Some colleges, yes, some colleges will require an SAT. But generally, I think the research shows that the students who've gone through IB programs, who've gone through the IB diploma, do very well on the SAT tests and then.
Right. I'm not thinking once you're there. Right now, there's all these arbitrary tests that they have to do in history. Those have been sort of guiding principles to get you into college. I just want to make sure that this isn't sort of, not going to allow them to do well on something that's still their uniform.
They'll do better.
It's really about a depth of learning. Memorization is such a superficial kind of learning, it doesn't, it's not going to stick. Like if we're relying on rote memorization to pass the SATs, now I'm nervous. If we're relying on the student's deep understanding because they've had this inquiry process where they really had to learn it at a deep level, it's going to stick a lot better. So when they do face those SATs, the knowledge that they've acquired over the years is going to be much more valuable than if it was just by rote memorization.
And unfortunately, SAT has a component to say, yeah, you can use your smartphone.
And frankly, to colleges feeling the pressure, they're changing, they're moving.
So when we visited Sturgis, they spent some time talking with us about, for instance, grading and class rating and valedictorian and all this, all that stuff. They have nothing to do with that. Power School, the LEWS, they have nothing to do with that. Because they want to have students focus on the process of learning, not the product. And that is, you know, quite interesting for us. So any issue? Yeah, I think a few parents might have trouble with that, yeah.
When we arrived in Boston for the orientation, the first person who spoke to us was one of the admissions folks from Suffolk University. And, I mean, he went as far as to say, not even the IB diploma, the IBP diploma is this elite level that's beyond anything else. Just students who are prepared in IBDP program. He said, without a doubt, the most sought after students by colleges, universities in the country. And he said, we find to be the best prepared students that come through our doors. So I think it's not only talking about earning that diploma and earning those scores, but the preparation of an IB education, what that means on the transfer.
That's why it almost seems like it shouldn't replace SAT.
A little more.
No, I mean, logically, it seems like it should.
Alright, we'll move along unless there's anything pressing to go on that. So the folks had a chance to look at the financial before group summary. I'm going to ask a few questions. If you have any further questions, we'll go on from there. According to this, we are currently enjoying a $734,000 fund balance. Couple hundred thousand of that seems to have to go back to the state in some ways.
That's actually monitoring it back to us. So if you look at the.
Logical trajectory.
So if you look at the, if you look at the general fund summary, the state education spending line, at the end of the year, that, that's the annulment promise to us from the state. So that's not a number. We take the year to hit actual because that money comes and goes into our budget. But at the end of the year, that would be, that number on the left, the 16,469, would be the actual 16,469. What happens is, some of our funding comes from towns and some of it comes from the state. So when we vote for, when we approve our budgets, we think okay, the town is now raising all this money. It's only raising about 30% of the funding for our schools. Most of it's coming is state funded for our schools. So the state and the town, there's a reconciliation that happens twice a year. And in that reconciliation, the town and the state trade money. And that's all based on the credit list. Does that make any sense to anyone?
We're going to discuss you on it.
Okay. So what I'm saying, what I'm saying is that it's not going to go, that's not going to be the cause for this balance going down by 200.
But the expenses are still quite a lot below.
Yeah, but I think the places right now, if you look on the variance on the right side, you'll see that our regular tuition, which we had budgeted at 135, is at, it's at actual 3.4. So that's a huge jump from what we had projected. And then our regular programs, I imagine, even though we closed our, the note here is we moved it up to a second for our French reading conferences, we're still, we're still not quite caught up. So I think that number is probably going to go down slightly for regular programs. But we're 330,000 up there. I don't know if either one of you wants to speak to either of those lines.
Well, I can speak to basically say that the excess is due primarily to two factors. One, the savings related to the fuel costs over this past year. Secondly, the costs associated with the savings that we made replacing certain teachers who retired a year ago, it was a hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars in the savings there between, difference between older folks and the people we brought in.
Do you guys have a sense of what's left to come in and where to see it? How much more of that 734,000 will go down? Is it going to go down another $200,000?
I've been in pursuit of that kind of information since I began. And it's such a hard thing to put your finger on. It seems like we don't know until July where we ended up in June.
I think last year, we were fairly steady around 600. For the last number of months around this time, I think that's where we ended up.
And the 606, 606,000, the getting fund down on 7, 150, that's the money that we spent on, at our annual meeting.
15, 15 goes to 70.
Any other questions? So it says here that that money still exists and down we expect it.
Right, okay.
Alright. Principal hiring process. I'll save you your voice if you feel like you're going to get it wrong, sounds good. So I'm on the MUMS principal search committee. And so we've been going through a very deliberate process of screening applicants, brought in a couple people for interviews. A committee of the committee went and did a site visit at the candidate school. That candidate is going to come interview at the school Thursday. And then there'll be a final interview after that. The process.
That is the final interview.
Yes, the final interview will be after that. After, after that.
On end.
Takes place on that end. That'll be the final interview. And it's been a very good process, a lot of volume, a lot of teachers on, teachers and staff on the committee. I think it's gone very well.
It's gone very well. And I went to work today and talked with the MUMS staff about the process, about where we were. And then I think I was able to, hopefully, you guys can tell the yes or no, whether the conversation was after our left. But I think I was able to speak to concerns and I think, I think the staff feels very good how, where we are and we're making decisions together. But it's, it's a very good process. So we're excited about Thursday and what's to come.
Ultimately, however, by statute, it will require us to be to finalize this process. Pursuer rather than delay. So we'll keep everybody quiet for that. Good roster, decent candidate pool, and great, great discussion and conversation we'll be going through. Let's see, transportation request. I'll try to translate something again.
Sure.
Peter got a request through our marketing company. Here's kind of the situation. There's a Middlebury Shoreham student at Middlebury High School who normally drove car to school with her sister who attends North Branch. And she'd get out in Middlebury and hitch a ride from Middlebury up to Ripley. That car has demise, forcing the Middlebury High School students to ride the bus. And so the request is, can her sister continue to come to Middlebury on the bus? And our policy, EBA, frankly, doesn't speak to this. And so Peter and I conversed a little bit via email as to how best to handle it. I'm not sure. So he decided we should bring it to the board. This has got sort of broad implications. And at the same time, what we also have is about a month left in school and, you know, frankly, I'll make some. helping somebody out. Our policy doesn't prevent this. It doesn't necessarily allow it either. So we started with an interesting question. As I thought about it, I think, you know, the broadening part of me says, you know, no, we don't want to set a precedent that all the private school kids can now start just riding the bus anytime they want. After all, once a kid steps on the bus, they're in the school district's custody to get safely appointed. B, they get off the bus, and we know they're going into a school, sort of within our custody, and what responsibility do we have when that, when that other guy hops into a car and drives away with somebody? On the other hand, I believe we're in using our public resources wisely, and it seems to me even better than having to go in separately to the same place. There's only a little bit of time left, maybe we should just do it.
Can you frame the issue for me again?
We have, we have a request. To have a non-student ride our bus from Shoreham to Millbury.
They're catching a ride from...
It's not our responsibility.
So does the school bus then would drop her on Virgin's route where they pick up the victim button? Or she would walk from...
I think it's a private car. We drive from Millbury to Ripley. So probably, my guess is another student going to that school would give a ride from Millbury to someone who lives in Millbury goes to that school.
Are you going to check to make sure that student made it to that school before they take off with somebody else? I mean, if it's our responsibility, it's on our bus.
Well, our students are our responsibility, it's a little gray or...
That's why I'm asking you, who's, you know, to make sure that student got to Millbury, if they were on our bus, do you need to make sure we check that person in and let them go, or?
Do you have something you want to?
I think the proper thing to do is to discuss the staff or an open, that's the Robert Rule's way of doing it. I would have a comment if there is an emotion.
Well, I guess the issues would probably be necessary, the questions would be necessary, the emotion, if you feel like you'd like to...
Or... Because it's a board policy.
Well, maybe I'll go ahead and make my comment anyway. I changed my mind about whether or not a policy speaks to this issue. I'm looking at it a little more. I'll just read a couple sentences. Where it is reasonable and necessary to enable a student entitled or required to attend an elementary or secondary school operated by the district. The district may furnish transportation on public roads, and so on and so on. Accordingly, the Addison Center Supervisory Union decided to furnish transportation under this policy. It seems to me that the policy is directed only at students who attend schools operated by the district. And the way I'm reading it now, that under this policy, the superintendent has no latitude to offer student transportation to anyone else, only students attending schools operated by the district.
That's why, that's why I brought it here.
So I'd call that interpretation of policy. Wouldn't, wouldn't have other interpretations either. Way doesn't speak to it, I lost my train of thought here. It doesn't say anything about non-students, and it says may.
Yeah, the question before a district, according to this policy, is whether or not to offer transportation to students attending our schools. And we have decided, ACSU has decided, to offer transportation to students attending our schools.
So then you're saying we don't have a policy about letting students or non-district kids?
That's correct. And in addition, some states require school districts, public school districts, to offer transportation to private schools within their district. For example, New York State does that. Vermont does not do that. And the other thought I have is that what we're trying to do here is to make the carpool more convenient. The carpool could very well go to Shoreham, pick up the student from Ripley. And that's a long drive, but it's an option. The family can also replace the car, that's an option. So it seems to me that we're under no obligation to do this, and I think it's still pretty slow, but I don't see the latitude to do it. It seems to me that language of the policy is clearly directed at students who attend our schools.
Here's Al. Jeremy had a point. I'm just off of current NUHS policy, which startled me this year. I wanted to have one of his friends come home. He was going to get our house for a couple of days and ride the bus. So this is an NUHS student, another NUHS student, but not on the same bus route. They would not let him get on that bus without a permission from his parents. So that is, are you familiar with that policy? Yeah. So wouldn't that make this impossible to do?
Policy to practice.
Correct.
I think it's certainly a function. No, I'm just wondering, Jeremy, would you say that policy specifically excludes the practice of students riding our bus?
There's no language that says that, that doesn't, there's no language that makes it clear. But there is language that makes it clear that the intent of the policy is to provide transportation for our students. And that it says that ACSU has decided to furnish transportation under this policy.
Who doesn't want to weigh in? Isn't that great? Would they even let this student get on the bus in the first place?
I'm saving.
Given the scenario I just described to you, would they even let this student get on the bus in the first place if they're not on that bus route?
Well, presumably, they are, because the brother is a student.
And I guess my question is, what's, what's to prevent anybody from getting on any of our buses to come to any of the private schools in Millbury?
Do you know the knowledge of what you're referring to?
No, I don't mean, I just meant if we, is our assumption is that we're going to deal with it case-by-case basis on anybody who wants to use...
If our policy were clearer, this would be an easier discussion.
That policy seems pretty clear. I don't, let me ask you this. Under that reading of policy, what's nettle?
Well, then specifically exclude?
Right, doesn't specifically say that someone's car, when someone's car breaks down, they can't take the bus. Yes, I would hear that. But it said, it speaks to district students and district schools. That's pretty clear.
It says that we may supply transportation to our students. It doesn't say that we may not supply transportation to anybody else.
That just seems like it does. That doesn't seem nettle to me at all. And that sets a fight. We would have to write an unbelievable policy to exclude all the things that you're... That doesn't mean we can't change it or we're vote for it, but I think that policy's pretty clear.
See? I know it's short-term, it's four months, of course, or 24 weeks, and nothing bad ever happens until something bad happens. What's our liability if that student gets on the bus? I mean, while the bus, the bus has an accident, it's hit, student's injured, you know, what's our liability? And that's now our student.
Or would we, would we set that student off the bus into any car?
That would be my primary concern. Do we know what our liability exposure is?
Yes. It's safe to be very careful on that one, I imagine.
But those students aren't getting, those students getting off the bus going into one of our schools, the students getting off and going into a car in...
That actually, I think the bus route is very different. Non-students are in, same exposure, I mean. Well, we have some liability terms to cover that situation for our own students, where I think our insurance company would have kittens. Nick, did you have something to add?
No, I, I, I lost, I mean, if there was a fight on the bus or that kid involved, I don't think it would...
So I... So the policy also says that the district may provide transportation to non-resident students as authorized by the school board. So to me, that does introduce a level of nettle. Now, this student technically is not a non-resident. This student probably is a resident who is choosing to go to a non-ACSU school. But that sentence, to me, does introduce the idea into the policy that the board, by policy, could be authorized to allow a student who's not going to one of our schools to ride our bus.
I would actually say that policy, that sentence says, it only speaks to non-resident students, not residents.
Oh, residents, yeah. Right, so if someone really would give transportation to come to our school, with some transportation to...
Well, I'll tell you what, unless people want to discuss this further, I would welcome a motion to allow this to happen. And if no motion presents itself, we'll move on the agenda. Go ahead, once. All right. Okay. We are now on to the facilities committee, and I think Nick, you're going to take this from here?
Yes, the facilities committee met this morning, and we discussed the two bids for the MUMS lobbying project. Russell Construction came in with 70,000, and Millbrook came in with 86,872. And there was no reason not to take the cheaper bid, so we agreed this morning that that was fine. Bruce McIntyre knows these people and thought those could have been two. So I'd like to move, we accept the bid of 70,000, Russell Construction.
Question, is that the exact figure?
69,999.
Save our dollars. Sounds like the price is right, it's right.
Yeah, who's coming? Russell, R-U-S-S-E-L-L Construction.
All right, so we have a motion to accept that bid.
Motion was just made.
Yeah, no, I did not, Mark seconds. All right, all those in favor of accepting the bid for 69,999 from Russell Construction for the middle school security wall, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anyone abstained? Excellent work. Anything else from the facilities committee?
No, I think, I think Bill Wilson has the update on what's happening in his report, so it's in the principal's report.
All right.
And we just want to throw that quickly.
Very good. Got one question?
Does the facilities committee feel as though that something is being done at the high school also? Because I have this feeling that you spent all this money for safety, happy middle school, and then you're doing nothing at the high school, and was there a, were we a threat at the middle school when you moved to the high school? So this is just something that concerns me. We feel like we have a safety concern for the middle school that we don't for this one.
There is actually, as part of that money that was part of the annual meeting, we are installing some security systems within the school, which includes automatically locking doors as well as video cameras in the hallway, so that, that we just haven't received. We're still working on getting bids on that. One of those projects isn't large enough that we need to go out to bid on. The other is, and we're still working on that. And we're actually, we're in the process of, the middle school did it today, had an audit that comes from the state. And high school, we're going to be doing that next week sometime, it's not a good script. So we also, I think I mentioned in the report, I'll labor, but now, like the college, we have installed a lightning detection system, I'm talking about shutout in the back of the school, which will sound an alarm when lightning is within a certain radius of the school. And it will be heard down at the facility field and at the north end of our property, some students or groups who are outside will be able to be warned and... Thankfully, we have the ability at facility field to get indoors when that kind of thing occurs, rather than hiding in the trees.
All right, well, we got some policy work to do here. Jeremy, discussion on that.
I move the UDT board to adopt policy JFJC, prevention of harassment, hazing, and bullying of students, as set forth on the board materials for tonight.
Laura, second to that, all those in favor of adopting policy JFJC, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
I move the UDT board to amend policy GBCD, employee harassment, as set forth on the board materials for tonight.
Is that Laura?
Yes.
And just quickly, this was the one at the last meeting where the board materials have gone around. I think we're on a safe ground to go ahead and adopt this.
I think you actually said amend in your motion.
I said amend. Yes, well, that is, that is correct, because we already hold this policy, but there was an update from the state. I think we're on a safe ground to go ahead and adopt this tonight, this is not, this is not a controversial policy. The changes in draft, what we saw before, it's a bright draft that you had tonight on a minor, and it's already been adopted by the UDT.
All right, all those in favor of amending policy GBCD as put forward in our package, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
I move the UDT board to rescind policy JG, student conduct and discipline.
Okay. All those in favor of rescinding JG, student conduct and discipline, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
This means the students are not going to do whatever they want. I move the UDT board to rescind policy JHCC, communicable diseases.
All right. And again, all those in favor of rescinding JHCC, communicable diseases, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So just to be clear, Jeremy, by amending that, do you have also adopted GBCD?
We have it sometime.
Yes.
Have we written up the name to 7 o'clock on the date?
We'll get back to you on that. I'm not sure why it's a 7, I don't think there's any reason, any reason you don't consider that saying so. I was just asking the information under number 13, so we're meeting again at 7 at our next meeting. I assume that that's incorrect, we'll plan on 6. We have any other business to trip? Yes, Bill?
Just a reminder that the graduation commencement is on June 1 this year. And if any of you have any interest in flow of distribution to insert the introduction of the chapter, consider to advance, to wait in advance. Waiting in advance or something. And certainly, they... Oh, yeah, I guess the other thing we should, the final assembly is actually on June 7 this year. Didn't have any snow days this year, so it sort of provided some interesting twists to the calendar. So we are having a final assembly on the 7th, so that you can have an 8th, which is a Wednesday, to have the final day of classes, or the final day of review. And then we have exams the next day, the 9th and the 10th, we'll have exams, then the 11th is graduation, and make-up exams on the following Monday. The teacher last day is the 14th, I believe, which is Tuesday.
Come on, it's on 10 a.m.
So the understanding is clear. Is, are students required to be there Monday?
Monday...
The 13th?
No, unless they haven't made...
Oh, if they haven't made...
Oh, so the last true student day is Friday?
Yes.
Depending on your attendance. Depends on their attendance.
How many have a student day, but they don't have to be there unless they haven't made up the exam?
As far as the middle schoolers know, the high school's full of kids.
That's right.
They don't like making them the only kids in session in all the district.
Sounded like there's a difference, but like...
Like, you get anything, we can talk next time.
It could be outside on it.
They're still there, that's all they care about.
Yes.
June 7.
And that...
Six o'clock. Six o'clock. And for those of you who haven't done before, the parade with the graduates to the Memorial Sports Center, really great. I encourage you, ladies, to join us.
Is that on the, that's on 7?
7 to 10 a.m.
Well, the final assembly is at 10.
The 1 is the 10?
Final assembly's at 9:30. We line up and leave at marching at sort of 9:00. Graduation's at 10.
All right, over.
Wait, when's the parade?
Yeah, when's the parade?
7th, Tuesday.
That's the final assembly.
That's the final assembly.
And graduation is June 11.
And graduation is June 11th.
But is there not a lot of morning reports, Friday?
Right.
No, can't move to Tuesday.
Because we're at the grand final dance there, we just, we need to have, the seniors need to have graduation rehearsals.
All right, well, if there's nothing else, then we can move to a journey. So, all those in favor of journey, please say aye.
Aye.
Very much.